Good afternoon, everyone. This is the Committee on Water and Land. And actually, it was a tri-committee with Water, Land, and the Committee on Housing, which this is decision-making only. And just to confirm that HSB 534 is doing its decision-making to the Committees of Water and Land and the Committee on Hawaiian Affairs today. The Committee on Housing will be making decision tomorrow. Okay? We'd like to welcome you all here. And again, this is decision-making only. And as such, we will not be taking any testimony. However, I think it's in the chair's prerogatives that any discussion on the measure members should be directed to the chairs here. If there's a question that is related to OHA or HCDA, but only clarification and no acceptance of any communications, testimonies will be accepted. But if we have, you know, just, just to kind of like mana'o or, you know, some, some discussion or something was bothering you, feel free. Okay? We don't have much time because aside from hearing and decision-making on SB 534 that we have today before us, the Committee on Water and Land has other measures as well. And the contact, including the hearing notice, a copy of the bill and testimony can be found on the legislature's website. However, we do want to say in our deliberation, as we continue immediately, we have only the copy of draft one. So hearing that, we will continue on to say what draft two will be. And members, I think, did you get your? Okay. Okay, all right. So with that note, we will offer the amendments and what this measure does on SB 534 and the Senate draft one, which will be including comments that we read today will be in the draft two. Okay. And members, Senator Makai, do you have a copy?
I'm not on this.
Oh, okay.
Next agenda.
I'm sorry. Okay. Very welcome. Okay. With SB 534, this is what the bill does. We'll adopt the Attorney General's amendments to clarify the process by which the Hawaii Community Development Authority may approve the development of residential projects in certain parcels of Kaka'ako Makai, providing a mechanism for the HCDA to approve OHA's proposal while also ensuring that any plans or proposals offered by OHA will be subject to public hearings and community feedback. We will also clarify the language regarding the hearing requirements as they apply to the HCDA and an applicant seeking approval for a proposed development. Number two, we will amend the measure to require that before submitting a project or proposal for residential development to the Hawaii Community Development Authority, an applicant shall complete an environmental impact statement. Our committees note that during the process of completing an EIS, the applicant will be required to address climate adaptation and mitigation, including sea level rise, a mitigation plan for noise, odor, and other aircraft-related nuisances that may affect the development and surroundings and the effects of development on water resources, including the aquifer. Third, in addition to an EIS, we will amend this measure to require that the applicant shall also obtain documentation from the Department of Health verifying that the applicant has adequately removed or kept any hazardous substances, pollutants, and contaminants detected on a parcel to be developed. It should be noted that while OHA's proposal is still early in the planning stage, OHA has created an environmental hazards management plan for each of its parcels in the Kaka'ako Makai area and will update each EH and PS project development progresses. In the long term, OHA will continue to comply with remediation standards adopted by the Department of Health and the United States Environmental Protection Agency. Fourth, it should also be noted that a document from the FAA is not necessary as OHA's Transit-Oriented Development Zoning, that's the TOD, the zoning rule, already allows for residential construction of up to 400 feet. Furthermore, we will amend the language to specify that only parcels owned by OHA shall be eligible for proposed residential development with a maximum height of 400 feet. We'd like to clarify. One second, please. Tabby? OHA and HCDA, please. Okay. OHA and HCDA. Yes. Okay. And fifth, clarifying that OHA shall determine the Kaka'ako Makai Association Fee to be collected from residents, tenants, and lessees on, off parcels of Kaka'ako Makai. That the fees collected shall be deposited into a special account of the OHA Special Fund, and disbursements made from the special account shall be made in accordance with procedures adopted by the Hawaii Community Development Authority and the Office of Hawaiian Affairs to fund projects and amenities in the Kaka'ako Makai area. Help OHA realize the financial value of the land and provide a revenue stream to help fund programs for native Hawaiian beneficiaries, OHA. Specifying that, six, specifying that the maximum floor area ratio for any residential development on certain parcels of Kaka'ako Makai shall not exceed 10.0, allowing for increased housing capacity and more efficient land use while preserving walkability and access to amenities. Seven, inserting language to ensure that 50% plus one unit of the residential units developed on certain parcels be allocated to households with an income at or below 140% of the area income remain affordable in perpetuity. And I think that's one issue that these committees ensured that we addressed this issue. Eight, while this measure includes a provision to ensure that residential units are sold only to owner occupants, we will note in the committee report that the loan process itself will ensure that units are sold only to prospective owner occupants as loans and mortgages made to homeowners require that the homeowner live in the property for which the loan or mortgage was made as their primary residence. Failure to do so would be the homeowner's loan or mortgage at risk. Nine, we will also note in the committee report the concerns of the Attorney General that the provision establishing a Kaka'ako Makai Association Fee may be construed as a tax. We request that the Judiciary Committee and the Committee on Ways and Means consider whether an amendment in this provision is necessary. Our committees also request that Judiciary and Ways and Means determine whether an Office of Hawaiian Affairs Special Fund to receive funds collected from the proposed Kaka'ako Makai Association Fee should be established in statute. And members, as I did mention, because of the new amendments we added that came from members of our committees, the chair would like to say that if you have your draft with you and you can make a note, our research office is printing the new version. But just to let you know, if you brought your own copy, the amendments that I, we have read in the, we offered was on page 10, and that was on line 16, that where it says, "Any other law to the contrary, notwithstanding the building height limit should be 400 feet, the maximum floor area ratio not to exceed 10.0 for any residential development by the authority in parcels bounded by Ala Moana Boulevard, Ilalo Street, Ward Avenue, and Forest Avenue pursuant to..." So this excludes the city and county and HCADA parcels and FAA violation parcels as well. The next page would be on page 11, which we read, the comments, the changes are on page 11 of the first proposal, where it says on page 11, an item that would be line 17, this would be G, where it says, "Development to households with income at or below 100%, 140% of the area median income in perpetuity." And so that were the changes. Before us is, as I did mention, is the draft two, which is being worked on now by SMA and will be distributed soon. And any comments from the members of the committee? Senator McElvee?
I'll take the plunge first. During the conversation in the committee, we noted that our cost of living is so much higher, probably about a lot higher after this weekend, especially in the urban core. And hopefully, there might be some consideration. We discussed 160% instead of 140%, given that these realities. And I hate to see people priced out of opportunity in the urban core when that's realistically, especially with these risk groups of teachers and firefighters they need to make. So I understand your intent is to clean date the bill. But absent reconsideration of that, is there a way to, if nothing else, put in the committee report to flag 160% instead of 140% as a point in perpetuity benchmark?
Any comments to Senator McElvee's comments? Senator Richards?
Yeah, thank you, Senator. I'll just take a swing at answering that. This is something that we raised the concern through the conversations and recognizing what we're trying to accomplish here and recognizing the high cost of living and that if we made the AMI too low, that these, these, the groups that we're trying to support, teachers, first responders, we would actually price them out. So at 140%, and I don't, I don't know the legality of 160%, but I don't disagree with your comments about putting it up to 160. I'm not sure we can do that. But the intent is to take that group of potential owners and be sure we're stewarding them so they can get in.
No, and I understand that. But those potential owners realistically have to earn more than that. And my concern is there's not enough qualified owners anymore, and then things start to slip out in perpetuity. That's why I just would, if there was a dirty, a dirty date in it, then I would be fine because it was a conversation to continue. But I understand that the chair's going to clean date the bill. This may be the last chance for me to talk about it. So to put it in the committee report would be great.
Yes, thank you, Senator McElvee and Senator Richards as well. We'll make that note in the committee report because there are still two other committees that will be hearing jointly, the Committee on Judiciary and the Ways and Means. And if it's noted in the committee report, I'm sure it would, you know, be upon their discussions as well.
And the House too as well. So thank you, Madam Chair. I appreciate you putting it in.
Thank you. Any other comments? Yes. Yes, okay. Yes. Senator Ihara followed by Senator Decort.
I'll defer to the...
You'll defer, okay?
So I have a similar comment with regards to the AMI. The average native Hawaiian household income is well below the 150, 140% AMI. So I mean, my concern is, can our native Hawaiian people afford something like this? But then also, with the comments that were made, the driving rise of household, market value, how do we ensure that when our local people, our essential workers, do make the choice to purchase, that it doesn't continue to skyrocket and skyrocket? And the next thing you know, they're having to move out of this urban area? So, yeah.
I think it's well noted. And with that particular question, I think it's the next phases for us is getting this, our policy on SB 534. So as it moves along with OHA and HCDA, you know, hopefully, that will be an issue or for discussions because they do have to go to the community as well. Now, it's interesting because part of this also includes the HCDA's authority with regards to all of the projects we've had. But if you don't mind, we're not taking testimonies. But just a question to clarify, Craig, HCDA, you've heard the discussions on AMI. Anything that you can order that diverses from the discussion and what's, what we have on the bill? Come on up. And we understand that there are, HCDA, you have your own rules as well and your, perhaps your, your history of seeing developments occur.
Yeah. Good afternoon.
Thank you, Craig, for being here.
Good afternoon, Chair members. I think Representative, I'm sorry, Senator Decort and Senator McElvee, I think your comments about the AMI. I think right now, the bill calls for targeting, I think, the income eligibility is home buyers earning up to 140, up to 140, or no, more than 140. So I think that allows for a little bit of flexibility. I think having an AMI target of less than 140 or somewhere really south of 140 might make it economically infeasible to develop. So I think for the Kaka'ako Reserve Housing Rules, we target buyers of up to 140 AMI. And I, there's definitely arguments and people, you know, against and for that. But I think you find that the 140 with affordability requirements like equity sharing and so forth, regulated term, help to maintain affordability.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Senator Ihara?
Yeah, Chair. I have a, as, as you know, I have a long history of this issue. And I am, at the moment, undecided. I guess the question is, do I trust the process? You know, we have a prior concurrence rule in the Senate. It rarely gets used. I think it's forgotten in the House, maybe. And I do feel that OHA was short-changed on the settlement. And I'm in favor of them, of OHA, although they did agree to it. But still, under duress, we do things that we want to now cure, which is, this is what the bill is for, I think, is to help make OHA a whole in what is due. I believe they should not have agreed to the last settlement, but nonetheless. So the question is, do I, do I favor, for me personally, one vote? Although, probably got voted, but just at least for myself, do, do I, what is my level of trust in this process? And I think because of the chair and having been a senator, and I really respect the OHA chair. And if there's anyone could help pull this off, it could be him. So I am actually going to be, I think, voting, convinced myself, voting for, with reservations. But note that should this go south, go in a direction that, like the removal of the impermeability, the impermeability to me is the whole game. And I think it'll be hard to develop this in those lands. But there are lands that the state owns that they can build houses in perpetuity. And for that reason, I'm going to go at this moment with reservations. I'm not sure what I'm going to do on the floor. But I did want to raise my, my concern and hope, I guess. I can say there's some hope at this point.
Thank you. Thank you for your, your kind words as well. And to note that this is just the first of the process. Goes to two other committees, and then it crosses over to the House. And so it starts all over again. And I, I hear your, your well-taken advantage of sharing that with us, Senator, because we never know whether it's going south or north or east or west. So let's, let's hope all goes well at this moment.
Just one last thing on that, that if the prior concurrence rule is not honored, I may vote against this.
I, I understand. And just to, for those that don't understand what the senator was referring to, is our committees will take a vote today, both the Committee on Hawaiian Affairs and the Committee on Water and Land. As this measure moves over to the next committee of Judiciary and Ways and Means, any changes that that committee makes must get the approval of the three of us, including the Chair of Housing, who will take a vote tomorrow. So we, we get that. I think at this point in time, I think the chairs that you see here today has, we've been around for a while, and we have our new senator from the Big Island. But it's well spoken, and we understand that sincerely. Okay? Senator Alefanti?
Two parts. First is point of information is the recommendation from both chairs to pass with amendments?
Yes.
That is correct.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you for that. And then if I may offer some comments?
Sure.
Yeah. Thank you, co-chairs. Appreciate your amendments, Chair Noe. Thank you to OHA. I do feel like this draft proposal is much better than last time with certain provisions that you're offering in terms of amendments, such as an EIS, impermeability, 140% AMI for residents and local families in terms of owner occupant. Some concerns I still have, and I thank OHA for responding to some initial questions I had, is even though that this would sort of be under OHA with working with HCDA in terms of how this would align with the city and county of Honolulu's general plan and sustainable plans. I know their response is they'll be working with the county in terms of collaboration. I know this full build-out is looking to look a projected 1,500 to 2,000 residential units. Make no mistake, I think we can all agree that more housing is needed, especially on the affordable part, and especially for community residents, like what Chair Kahle was alluding to in his testimony. So I concur with that, that more housing needs to be done. And the other concern that I do have specifically has to do with evaluation of housing lands were acquired through, through the settlement and achieving that $200 million valuation. So I asked OHA to, and the Board of Trustees, to really take a look at that so that they basically articulate what these lands, ceded lands were, were given for in that sense. So with that, Chair, I still have some concerns. However, I'll be voting in support with reservations. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Chair.
Make one other clarification.
Senator Ihara?
Just to be clear, I am opposed to the 400 building height in the Makai area.
And that's further your with comments.
Right. And so, but if, if a bill comes in at the end and has, it allows for 400 limit, I will vote no.
Towards the rolling south at the end.
Yes, if it goes south, right, right.
All right.
One point of clarification.
Yes. Okay. Last comment because we have other issues on the agenda.
No, no, I know. Just to clarify, but you're still...
Senator McElvee?
Just to make clear, you're still going to put the 160 in the committee report, though, right?
Yes.
Okay. That's it.
Yes. Okay. All right. Members, let's proceed with taking a vote. The measure was deferred to today, February 3, 2025, at 1:00 p.m. So with that said, Chair's recommendation on SB 534 is to pass with amendments. Okay? Any comments from the Committee on Water and Land? Hearing non-Vice Chair Alefanti for the votes for the Committee on Water and Land?
Chair's recommendations to pass SB 534 with amendments. Chair Noe?
Aye.
Vice Chair Alefanti votes aye with reservations. Senator Chang?
Aye.
Senator McElvee?
Yes.
Senator Decort?
No.
Madam Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Thank you.
On the Committee of Hawaiian Affairs, Senator Kilhulali taking the vote. The recommendation of the chair is to pass with amendments. Chair votes aye.
Chair votes aye. Vice Chair San Berna Ventura is excused. Senator Ihara?
Reservations?
Kilhulali goes aye. Senator Decort?
No.
Chair recommendation adopted.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Then this concludes the first portion of this hearing for the Committee on Water and Land. And we'll take a short recess so we can excuse our other committees. Short recess. Good afternoon. The Committees on Water and Land and the Public Safety and Military Affairs is on its hearing notice today on this agenda at 1:05 p.m. in Conference Room 229. We'd like to welcome all of you to this hearing as well. And for those testifiers, including those on Zoom, we ask that you stand on your written testimony. And if your testimony is different from your written testimony, the time limit for each will be the two minutes. And hearing notices, the copies of the bills and testimony can be found on the legislature's website. And the video stream of this hearing can be found on the Senate's YouTube channel. We will proceed with SB 3, and this is relating to water. And this authorizes the Commission of Water Resource Management to retain independent legal counsel. It repeals the position of the first deputy to the chairperson of the Committee on Sea Worm, on the Committee on Water Resource Management, and establishes the position of Executive Director of Sea Worm. And this also, the, authorizes entities to challenge an emergency order of Sea Worm under certain conditions. It establishes fines for water use offenses. It amends the Sea Worm's authority to declare water emergencies and issue orders to address them and declare water shortages and related notice requirements. And members and to the public, if you notice that this measure before us also included Red Hill and the bunk fuel storage facility. But as we move to our discussions today, anything related to Red Hill will not be in this measure. So we will proceed then. And there are some recommendations that we will be sharing with you on SB 3. And so testifying today, De... And so testifying today, DLNR, Ashera Taha Hani. Aloha.
Aloha. Good afternoon, Chairs, Vice Chairs, Members of the Committee. The department is going to stand on its written testimony for writing comments on this measure. I'm available if you have any questions.
Thank you very much. And members, if you have any questions for our new member of SeaWorm, we welcome her to our families here at DLNR. Okay, I think I saw my dear friend Ernie Lau from Board of Water Supply. Oh, he's here. Oh, good. Come on up. Yes, or sorry, I didn't, you know, it's better even if you're going to stand on your, you know, your comments. But those on Zoom can't hear you or those out there. So good afternoon. Happy New Year.
Kung Hiva Choi. Happy New Year. Aloha, Chair and members. Ernie Lau, manager for the Honolulu Board of Water Supply. And I have the greatest respect for the current Chair of the Board of Land and Natural Resources and our Deputy Director behind us. However, you know, on this measure, we strongly support and we stand on our written testimony and strong support. Thank you.
Thank you. And I think you did that as well when we heard the measure last year. And we appreciate your support. Okay. Thank you. Office of Hawaiian Affairs. Aloha.
Aloha. Good afternoon, Chair Noe, Vice Chair Alafonte, and members of the committee. I'm going to stand on my written testimony to the extent I'm going to not repeat anything in that. But I just wanted to highlight a few points outside of my written testimony about the Office of Hawaiian Affairs' longstanding involvement in this issue, which is of great concern to native Hawaiian beneficiaries. Every significant water case in the past 20 years before the Supreme Court was brought on behalf of native Hawaiian plaintiffs exercising either traditional and customary rights, practicing, you know, subsistence fishing and farming, those types of issues. So this is of great concern to the Office of Hawaiian Affairs. And so we submit this testimony with those years of, you know, actually participating in some of those lawsuits and helping to form water law in Hawaii. And so we're in strong support of this measure.
Mahalo. Mahalo. Sierra Club, Wayne Tanaka, are you on Zoom?
Yes, good afternoon, Chairs, Vice Chairs, Members of the Committee, Wayne Snacko, Recircable Hoy. We're in strong support of this measure. Just wanted to thank the Chair for following through on your commitment last session to, you know, to bring this issue back up again for discussion this session. Otherwise, you know, just stand on a written testimony and happy to answer any questions. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Sierra Club. Candace Fujikane.
Hi. I gave testimony last time and I stand on my written testimony. I just didn't want to urge the committee to support Senate Bill 3. And I was one of hundreds of people who testified for 12 hours in support of Kamehameha as well when he was redeployed and politics has no part in the Commission of Water Resources. So thank you.
Good seeing you. Thank you.
Oh, I didn't know that.
Okay. We do have many in support. I do not have any that's in opposition. Anyone that sent in testimony here without saying you're going to testify in person, if you want to, please come up, mahalo, and state your name for the record.
Aloha, Chairs, Vice Chairs, Members of the Committees, Oriana Leal of the Department of Hawaiian Homelands. I apologize for the delayed testimony. We stand on our written testimony in support with amendments. Majority of the amendments are meant to make explicit what we believe to be implicit in the intent of the bill. And we also recommend and advocate for to have the chairperson or the chairpersons designee of the Hawaiian Homes Commission on SeaWorm to advocate for water rights and secure water reservations and water credits for current and foreseeable needs of Hawaiian homelands. I'm available for questions. Mahalo.
You have, you, we did get your testimony? Did we receive DHHL's testimony? Okay, we can check on further. Thank you. Thank you very much. Any other comments from the public here? Otherwise, we'll proceed then with the next committee. And for those that are here for the SeaWorm bill of SB 3, we have a couple of more bills to go through, two more. But if you're not here, my recommendation for the changes to this measure would be to take, and I think most of you would know that we, the original bill last year passed the Senate as an SD-1. And that seems like we got many of your mana'o in that bill. And so we will be using that measure. And so as well as I did mention earlier, that anything that had to do with the Red Hill and other measures were added by the House. But we will go with what the Senate had previously passed to go over to the House last year. Okay, with that said, then we will continue on to SB 130 relating to search and rescue. And this requires government entities to seek reimbursement for all or a portion of search or rescue expenses for persons who require rescue after leaving a hiking trail to enter an area close to the public or hiking on a trail close to the public, and there is a sign giving notice of the closure. We do have Attorney General here. I thought I saw someone come in earlier. Here, if not, you may be outside. And we have, oh, maybe on Zoom. IT is the Attorney General Hiroki Take on.
Not present on Zoom, Chair.
Oh. I'm a robot. I don't have testimony.
Oh, okay. Oh, sorry, sorry. Okay. Well, thanks for hanging out with us. Thank you. Okay. Okay, all right. Thank you. And then we will then proceed with Becky Smith. Okay, hearing none. We have, let's see, 10 in support of this measure, no opposition. And so thank you for your comments. If there's anyone here who wishes to speak on SB 130. Okay, seeing none, then shall we proceed? Okay, all right. Thank you. We'll proceed with SB 223, and this is relating to fire prevention. This requires certain owners and occupants of properties located in hazardous fire areas to maintain effective fire breaks within 30 feet of the property and to practice other fire prevention activities. Establishes the Community Fuels Reduction Project to be administered by the Department of Land and Natural Resources. It requires a report to the legislature and also appropriated funds. Okay, all right. SB 223, Attorney General. Aloha, and thanks for being with us today.
Chair Noe, Chair Alafonte, Vice Chairs, and Members of Committee, good afternoon. I am Deputy Attorney General Hiro Take, and I'm here on behalf of the Department of the Attorney General. We have submitted written testimony with our concerns on this bill, and I am available to take any questions.
Members, any questions of EAG since this year? Thank you, Senator Alafonte.
Thank you. Thank you, Deputy Attorney General. So in your testimony, you mentioned some of the definitions that the AG has concerns with. What alternatively you mentioned in page two, the preference would be to use HRS Section 132-2. Is that my understanding of how I read your testimony?
Not so much a preference, just a option.
Okay. And if we were to amend it to reference that option, AGs would be okay?
Yes. So 132-2 gives the county firefighters. Yeah, the ability to make rules to define definite, define the key terms. However, you know, these definitions probably would need, you know, someone informed in vegetation and the areas in which these vegetations are. So, you know, the county fire chiefs could ask for help from people with that type of specialized knowledge. But it is an option to define those terms through that, through that particular statute.
Okay. Thank you so much. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Okay, DLNR. Aloha. Mr. Walker. Yes. Good to have you here. Thank you. State your name again.
Yes. Aloha, Chair, Vice Chairs, Members of the Committee. My name is Michael Walker. I serve as the Department of Land and Natural Resources Division of Forestry and Wildlife, statewide fire protection forester. I also represent the department on the State Fire Council as well. So the department has submitted testimony with comments on the measure. Just a quick summary of that. The department's view is that this language should really be in the fire code, which is currently is the State Fire Council's responsibility and will be the responsibility of the Office of the State Fire Marshal. And in putting it in the code, it allows for a lot more flexibility and adaptation rather than writing it into statute. That's for part one. And then for part two, in terms of the Community Fuels Reduction Program, that's a massive expansion of the department's responsibilities, not just for its own lands, but also for all of other state lands. So there would, there'd be some liability issues that need to be addressed, perhaps an expansion of Chapter 185, land fire law, and an increase in staffing and budgets in order to be able to accomplish this. There's also other concerns on Land Division as well in regards of the liability and the responsibility of performing these land, these fuel reduction projects on their lands without proper funding and oversight.
And you've heard the Attorney General's recommendation with regards to 132-2, having the fire chiefs adopt the rules as well overall.
Yes, ma'am. Yeah, that particular statute has written in that we write the fire code, the State Fire Council does. And we'd like to see that rather in the fire code and not just to actually put into statute for 132. Because that way it'd be, it's more flexible. It can be changed and amended much easier.
Okay, all right. Questions for DLNR? Thank you so much for being here. Appreciate your presence. Department of Education on Zoom, but I think was going to be in person. And this is pretty much comments, Kamemia Schools. IT, anyone from Kamemia Schools on Zoom?
Not present on Zoom.
Thank you so much, members. And they did send comments as well with regards to SB 223. Anyone else here wishes to speak to SB 223? Hearing none. Then members, any questions? I think this is the last of the two or three measures before us today. And I think we're ready to go and making decisions. Staff, may I have directions, please? I need the agenda for the first one to proceed. We need the other, the other two measures.
You want to reset?
No, I think we're. Again, I'm going to modify those. Okay, we just add that then.
132-3.
Dash three, okay. So with amendments then?
Yeah.
Okay. One second. Okay, what is this? Oh, is this? Oh, okay. Is this? No, I mean. Yeah, yeah. Keep looking as is. Look at this. On the 130. No, you can do 53. Oh, no, then you. A little S's. Okay. Yeah. S's and the S. Okay. All right, are we going to decision-making? Do you have enough? Okay, we have four. All right. We're going to the votes, decision-making on the agenda of February 3, Monday, in Room 229. Members of the Committee on Water and Land with regards to SB 3 relating to water. Chair's recommendation is to pass with amendments. We'll be using the SD-1 of last year's measure regarding SeaWorm. Any discussions on this measure?
Chair, point of information on the SD-1, would this remove Red Hill?
Yes.
The 18 in the proposed.
And we will remove that because there are other Red Hill measures moving along. And I think in deference to that particular issue, it should stand alone. Thank you. Yes. All right. So pass with amendments, Committee on Water and Land. Okay, Vice Chair Alafonte for the votes.
Chair's recommendation on SB 3 is to pass with amendments. Chair Noe.
Aye.
Vice Chair votes aye. Senator Chang.
Aye.
Senator McKelvey.
Yes.
Senator Decourt.
Aye.
Madam Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Okay, thank you.
And same recommendation for the Committee on Public Safety and Military Affairs. Chair votes aye.
Vice Chair votes yes. Senator Fukunaga, excused. Senator Rhodes, excused. Senator Decourt.
Aye.
Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Thank you, Vice Chair.
Okay, for the Committee on, I mean, I'm sorry, SB 130 relating to search and rescue. Chair's recommendation is to pass this measure as is. Any discussion? Hearing none. Vice Chair for the vote. Chair goes aye.
Chair's recommendation is to pass SB 130 unamended as is of the five members present on waterland. Any no votes? Any votes with reservations? Hearing none. Madam Chair, your recommendation is adopted. Same recommendation for PSM.
Chair Alafonte.
Aye.
Vice Chair votes yes. Senator Decourt.
Aye.
Fukunaga votes excused. Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. For SB 223 relating to fire prevention, Chair's recommendation is to pass this measure as well. And we'll incorporate DLNR's comments with regards to the fire code into this measure as well. So pass with amendments. Okay, any discussions?
Thank you so much for hearing this bill and supporting your recommendation. Appreciate it.
Thank you. For waterland, Chair goes aye on SB 223.
Chair's recommendations to pass with amendments, SB 223, of the five members present, any no votes? Any votes with reservations? Hearing none. Madam Chair, your recommendation is adopted. And same recommendation for PSM with amendments.
Chair Alafonte.
Aye.
I vote yes. Senator Decourt.
Aye.
Fukunaga votes excused. Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Thank you so much, Vice Chair.
Thank you. Yes, yes. The Committees on Water and Land and Public Safety and Military Affairs is done. And we say hello and thank you to the committee. Okay. Good afternoon again. It's been a busy day for the Committee on Water and Land, but I'm glad it's not raining today. Anyway, welcome all of you. It's the Committee on Water and Land on its hearing notice of Monday, February 3. And this is supposed to be the 106th agenda or the last. and this is supposed to be the 106th agenda or the last agenda for the day. And we have some very, very meaningful bills before us, and we're happy to at least move quite a bit along the way so we can also assist our families and colleagues and friends on Maui in particular. Okay, members, SB 1296, and this is relating to disaster recovery, and this examines certain reconstructions of all or a portion of a construction in the Lahaina National Historic Landmark District that was destroyed by wildfire on August 8, 2023, from the requirements of a special management area minor permit or a special management use permit. And this increases the valuation threshold of development subject to a special management area minor permit or a special management area use permit from $500,000 to $750,000 when it is located within an area subject to a federal disaster proclamation as of August 8, 2023. Okay? Testifying, I did see Maui, representing Maui today on behalf of Mayor Bisson sends communication anyway in support, but let's hear from Office of Planning and Sustainable Development, Mary Ellis sends comments. Okay, on Zoom, Front Street Recovery Support, Jeff Uweoka IT, is Mr. Uweoka on Zoom? IT, are you there?
He's there, he's on.
Okay, let's then continue on. Okay, we have. Okay.
He's on there.
He's on. Oh, okay. All right. Thank you. Okay, Jeff, proceed.
Thank you, Chair, Vice Chair Alefante, and members of the committee. Jeff Uweoka, I'm assisting Front Street Recovery, stand by my written testimony, be available if you have any questions. Thank you.
And you're in support?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. The Chair notes that we had 62 in support, and we have in opposition. One second. Two in opposition. Is there anyone else here who wishes to speak on 1296? Come forward. Okay, hearing none? Aloha.
Aloha. My name is Heather Nakalaw Williams, and I am standing by my written testimony. Thank you so much.
Okay, in support or?
In support.
Okay, mahalo. Appreciate that. Anyone else wishes to speak to SB 1296? Hearing none, then let's move on to SB 364, and this is relating to state boating facilities. And this establishes a state boating facility lease program within the Division of Boating and Ocean Recreation of the Department of Land and Natural Resources to be administered by DOBR. Authorizes BLNR to lease Alawaye Small Boat Harbor for private development, management, maintenance, and operation. It repeals provisions relating to the leasing of fast lands and submerged lands of Alawaye Boat Harbor, requires annual reports to the legislature, and it repeals the state boating facility lease program on June 30, 2045. Okay, Hawaii Government Employees Association, HDEA. Aloha. Happy New Year.
Hello, Chair, Vice Chair, Members of the Committee. Nui Sebastian here with HDEA. I will stand on a written testimony in opposition to this measure. I do want to emphasize that this measure will lead to the job displacement of current government employees that provide services at Alawaye Boat Harbor.
Okay, thank you. DLNR, Megan Stats, aloha.
Aloha Chair, Vice Chair, Committee Members. Megan Stats for the Department of Land and Natural Resources. The department stands on its written testimony in support. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And members, questions if you have any? Okay, Kalani Werner, UPW, aloha.
Hello, Chair Inouye, Vice Chair Alefante, Members of the Committee, Kamakana Kamalaua, Government Affairs Manager for Native Public Workers. You have a written testimony in strong opposition. You know, even though this particular legislation pertains specifically to DOBR and DLNR, we think this is actually a lot bigger issue in terms of creating a blueprint for the privatization of government operations. Happy to answer any questions, ma'am.
Okay, mahalo. Ivan Hu, Unite Here Local Five, okay, in opposition. Surf Rider Foundation. Hannah Lilly, aloha.
Aloha.
Good seeing you. Thank you for coming.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Chair and Vice Chair. My name is Arlene Velasco. I'm the current Chair of Oahu Surf Rider, and we stand in strong opposition to this bill. I am also familiar with the harbor through sailing, and I've seen over the years a deterioration of the harbor, which appears to be an effort, from what I can tell, an effort to show that publicly held land cannot be maintained properly. So, we don't have a pump out station anymore. There hasn't been one in over 10 years. That means all those boats, they're affluent, it goes most likely directly to the harbor. It's a real travesty. There are plenty of examples in harbors up and down all of our coast on the mainland that shows how beautifully a publicly owned harbor can be managed and maintained. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Hawaii Thousand Friends, Donna Wong, okay, in opposition. The Spore Foundation, Hardy Spore, in opposition. Okay, Sam Munee, aloha.
Aye.
Happy New Year.
Happy New Year. Thank you, Committee, for allowing me to speak. I'm gonna just go over a few things in my testimony. First of all, Megan Stats once called Alawaye Harbor the only cash cow in the state, and only a fool would sell its cash cow. That property is making money. Even though it's being poorly managed, it's making money. Now, Hughes has been trying to get their hands on that property for the last 15 years. When Ed Underwood was running the department, he was their man, their point man. And now that he's out, they're still trying to do it and, you know, be named in the bill. This bill gives them carte blanche to do whatever they want with public lands, and that's a public trust asset. And the Hawaii Supreme Court has ruled over and over and over again that Hawaii Trust assets like the Alawaye Harbor cannot be privatized. So, make it really short and clear. There's a few of us in the harbor, and I filed a lawsuit that's still pending, but we're gonna, if this bill goes through, we're gonna sue the state, and we hope that Hughes is part of the deal, because we want to go after them too. And we believe that the federal court will find in our favor, and if they do find in our favor, we're also gonna go after the DLNR rules and then our new federal US Supreme Court decision. They decided that agency rules do not have the rule of law. So, if we win this one, okay, the DLNR rules are gonna be thrown out the window, and this whole bill is gonna be shut down. Now, one more thing. The Hilton employees in their strike settlement got Hilton to agree to give them parking on site. As a result, all of the Hilton people are not parking in our parking lot anymore, and I'm right there, I'm at a live aboard. The parking lot's empty in the mornings, except when surfers are there, and there's no surf right now, so it's all clear. I'm opposed to any kind of bill or anything that will limit access to local people. That is the last stand for natives and for local people to enjoy Waikiki Beach, park over there, surf over there, party on weekends, teach their kids to surf. That's been going on since I was a kid. That's the last place, okay, in Waikiki for locals to do that. Kapuolani was taken now with the parking over there. So, any plan that would limit access to anybody that lives here in favor of tourists, because when you have parking, that's the tourists don't mind paying that. Okay, when you're surfing, you're not gonna be watching the metering. So, let me just state again that this bill is tailored for Hughes. I mean, it's just, it's all over the place, and they've been after this property for years. They want to build a 400-foot tower on the existing office site, the Hilton. I mean, Ilikai is opposed to that, and they've got all the money in the world to support a lawsuit.
Thank you, Sam.
So.
Thank you for your comments.
Just wanted you to know it's in the works.
On your communication as well. IT, can you check the timer as well? It's two minutes. Thank you. Solomon Kava Mai? Okay, aloha.
Sam already covered.
Oh, okay. So, you stand on your written testimony as well in opposition? Okay, mahalo. Sienna Streamfellow, aloha.
Aloha. My name is Sienna Streamfellow, and I grew up living on a boat in Alawaye Harbor with my father. I'm in the opposition of SB 364. I've watched the public fight privatization for most of my life. There's no language in this bill that protects our free public access, which DOBR has admitted to wanting to take in the past. The harbor makes $2 million off of our harbor slips alone and should pay for its upkeep. Public spaces aren't meant for prioritizing profit. We have to keep the few places we have left in Waikiki for locals. Please do not pass this bill and protect all state boat harbors. Mahalo.
Mahalo. And Sam, thanks for letting us know that the Hiltons has taken care of their own parking for their employees. Okay, Karen Boyer?
Aloha.
Aloha.
Chair Inouye, Vice Chancellor Alefante, and Committee Members. I'm opposed to State Bill 364 for many of the reasons cited within the public testimony of this bill, as well as my own submitted testimony. My primary concerns include ocean and boating access for the residents of the community who regularly surf, fish, paddle, swim, and use recreational boats in the Alawaye Small Boat Harbor area and accompanying areas. It is truly a community gathering area for health and traditional activities. The public-private partnership cited within the bill provides no evidence of financial success, and as importantly, historical attempts at privatization in the area have failed. Some private-public partnerships in other areas of the island have resulted in zero access for the public. To summarize, I and many other residents and members of our wonderful island community oppose SB 364 and its companion bill due to public access and parking not being fully addressed and a blatant lack of community input regarding the Alawaye Small Boat Harbor area for future planning. Thank you.
Thank you, Karen. Margaret Hallahan?
One moment, Chair. She's available on Zoom.
Okay, thank you. Hello? Proceed, Margaret.
Oh, hi. My name is.
Aloha.
Aloha, everyone. My name is Maggie Hallahan, and I learned to paddle outrigger canoe just in this beautiful Alawaye area. And I also stayed at the Hilton Hotel many times, and I didn't know that the actual land where the Hilton, where Duke Kamanimoku Lagoon is, is actually BLNR control area. And basically, I just don't think that the capability of the department can even oversee the existing agreements that they have with the Hilton, because there's signs everywhere that the Hilton's put up, and it makes it look like it's the Hilton Lagoon. People call it the Hilton Lagoon, but it's not. And there's no enforcement, even though I did go to the police department and make a citation against the area, because the signs don't say that it has 24-hour access. It only says that it has 12-hour access, but the Hilton put up those signs. So, anyway, just as a user of the area, and also I used to stay at the Hilton, I felt very deceived. And so, it's just, you're not protecting the public to even know what's happening, like what's land is there for, you know, what already has been agreed upon with the Hilton Hotel. So.
Thank you, Margaret. Thank you so much. Okay, you're welcome. Okay, Tina Parker, and followed by Kate Thompson. And if you can stand on your two minutes, we have, we need to get out here by 2:30, I'm told, and we got five other items.
Yep, I gotta pick up my kids too. Aloha. Thank you very much for your time. My name is Tina Parker. I live in Kuleo. Senator Chang is my senator, and I stand in very strict opposition to this. I submitted written testimony, just a couple of highlights. I feel like year after year, we are forced to stand here and fight for what should already be protected, our ocean access, our public spaces, and our communities. I feel like enough is enough. I'll be very happy when the last year that we have to come here and do this is the year that you memorialize protection for the Alawaye Small Boat Harbor. We demand that you protect our rights to this space, maintain at least 303 public parking stalls, no public-private partnership for ocean access and for the practice of traditional, customary native Hawaiian rights. This is where we gather. This is where we celebrate life, first birthdays, and honor those who have passed. This is where we fish, we swim, we surf, and we watch the sunset over another beautiful day. This is our home. We are not going anywhere. This is our space. We are entitled to our joy. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Kate? Aloha.
Sarah Inouye, thank you, and Vice Chair. We are really happy to be here to have a chance once again to protect public access. So, I'd like to say that in terms of SB 364, I strongly oppose this bill. I also represent a group called Surfparking.org, which we designed specifically to protect this 300 parking out of 1,000 parking spots. So, about one-third is paid, one-third is for boaters, and one-third is free. And two years ago, you introduced a bill protecting this 300 spots for public access, and it was well received in both water and land and Hawaiian affairs, but it never got heard in ways and means. So, we're just saying mostly that we need you to put this in the bill to go forward, either to hold the bill totally and not allow it to go forward based on, I'm gonna be curious what your thing is and how many are opposed and how many are for, but we really, we need to protect this area, resume regular public meetings, and to clearly define what will be left for the public in terms of slips and parking. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Kate. Okay, members, we did on this measure, SB 364, two in support, opposition 39, and one comment. Okay, we'd like to then proceed with, and thanks for those of you who had submitted testimonies and testified on this measure as well. Yes, but that's not including the groups. Yeah, because the groups are counted as one. So, there were several groups in opposition. Okay, SB 364 relating to state boating facility, oh, sorry, we're on that already. 366. SB 366 relating to stream maintenance. Okay, no, we're short of time, but as I mentioned, all of the ones that said they were gonna testify, we called. Okay, what is the family name? We got.
My testimony, it's only one minute.
Okay, you know, sorry, but we have. And unfortunately, that's the rule of the Senate. Our committee only has from 1 o'clock to 2:30. I'm sorry, but we hear you, and we appreciate, you know, whatever has been said as well and all the comments provided. SB 366 relating to stream maintenance clarifies that personal property stored in or near a public stream or tributary for a continuous period of more than 24 hours shall become abandoned property, which the Department of Land and Natural Resources shall be disposed of. 366, DLNR.
DLNR stands on its testimony in opposition.
Okay. West, Hawaii Water Service. Okay, sends in... IT, Jeff Cooks, is he on Zoom?
Yes, I'm here. I'm here. Can you hear me?
Oh, okay, okay. All right.
He's on there right now.
He's on?
Yeah, he's on.
Okay, Jeff, proceed.
Yes, aloha, Chair, vice chair, members of the committee. Thank you for allowing me to testify on our opposition to SB 386. You do have our written testimony, but I just want to add a few points. We do urge, as the representative of Hawaii Water, we do service, we do urge the committee to defer this bill or amend it to exclude public utilities regulated by the Hawaii Public Utilities Commission. You know, we're a highly regulated, just like any water purveyor, we're a highly regulated water utility. We're regulated by the Department of Health, Sea Worm, the State Wastewater Branch, you name it, we're highly regulated. Just to give you some background on us, we serve over 6,500 customers across the islands. In the last decade, we've invested $70 million in much-needed water and wastewater infrastructure. We're committed to expanding conservation programs and recycled water programs. In fact, we serve millions of gallons a day of recycled water in and across the islands, and we're actually working with the County of Maui to increase recycled water usage in West Maui, and we currently serve recycled water in the Conopali District in West Maui. So...
All right, we got your comments. We're one bill from where we were, but thanks anyway, Jeff, for your comments on...
Do you want me to come back? Are we gonna go over 386, or we're done?
Yeah, well, why don't you just hang on then, if you want to? But otherwise, yeah, you're on our records.
Okay, thank you.
Sidian County of Honolulu, Jean Albano. Okay, in support, Jacob Weineck, Denise Boisfer, and Kim Jorgensen, all in support. Okay, anyone else wishes to speak to SB 366, stream maintenance? Hearing none, we'll proceed then with SB 386 relating to water systems. This requires DLNR to acquire all West Maui water systems of eminent domain and hold the water system in trust for the County of Maui to manage. 386, okay, DLNR.
DLNR stands on its testimony in opposition.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Jeff, we did hear part of your comments. Jeff, are you still on?
Yeah, I'm here. Yes, can you hear me?
We did receive your opposition and got a chance to hear you in opposition. Clay Sharknick on SB 386 in support, and Karen Komkowicz, an individual in support. And that's it for 386. Chair would like to... Sorry, but we got a late testimony received by DLNR with regards to Senate Bill 366. And I think, Ian, you did mention that the department opposes 366. Am I correct? Okay, we got it in writing now. Okay, thank you so much. Okay, let's proceed then to 3841, SB 841, and this is relating to marine life conservation districts, requires DLNR to establish and conduct the Marine Life Conservation District carrying capacity program. DLNR, Brian? Keep mahalo for being with us today.
Aloha, Chair, vice chair, members of the committee. Brian Nielsen, on behalf of DLNR, we stand on our written testimony in support of this bill as long as it doesn't adversely impact the priorities and the executive budget.
Okay, thank you. And members, any questions you may have, please. Okay, Ocean Tourism Coalition, Denver Kuhn, on Zoom.
Yes, good afternoon, Chair, vice chair, members of the committee. We stand on our written testimony, just providing comments on the bill.
Okay, thank you very much. Denise Antolini, Malama Pupukea, Waimea.
Not present on Zoom, Chair.
Okay, on Zoom, not present, did you say?
Yes, correct.
Okay, thank you. We did receive five more letters of support. Ted Boland, Shane Nelson, Philip Fernandez, Chad... Okay, here's Mr. Boland. Aloha.
Thank you, Chair, vice chair, members of the committee. Ted Boland for the White Reef and Ocean Coalition. Marine life conservation districts are important for restoring the fish stocks and preserving the waters. It would be really helpful to have the carrying capacity known, so I support this bill and urge the committee to pass it. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Anyone else wishing to speak to SB 841? Hearing none, members, we got two more. SB 848 relating to desalination establishes a desalination planning test force to examine the feasibility of and develop a plan and timeline for the use of desalination as a source of portable water in the state. SB 848. DLNR, thanks for being with us today.
Of course, thank you.
Okay, aloha.
Aloha, Chair, vice chair, members of the committee. DLNR stands on our written testimony in support of this measure with our one comment recommending adding an appropriation to assist with preparation of the final report to the legislature. Mahalo.
Okay, thank you. Ernie Lau, still with us? Mahalo.
Thank you, madam. Chair, members, Ernie for Border Water Supply. We stand in support of this measure in addition to the study including disposal of brine concentrate. We'd like to request item, let's see, item B6, please allow for designee in addition to the manager or designee. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Ernie. Okay, we have two other support comments sent in, Michael Rice and Jacob Weinsack in support. Anyone else wishes to speak to SB 848? Hearing none, let's proceed to the last.
Question for Manager Lau.
Yes, Senator Elefante.
Thank you, Manager Lau. Thank you for your testimony on this, but also in follow-up to this, is the Border Water Supply or anything that you know about the different counties looking at treatment rather than desalination?
We are already on Oahu. We treat for pesticide contamination central Oahu by filtering it through activated carbon. We actually have a desalination project. It's in the early stages.
That's located where specifically?
In Kalailoa area, below the industrial park, some land that was provided to us as Barbara's Point Naval Air Station was closed.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, madam Chair.
That's good news. Yes, good luck.
This major municipal system...
Senator McKelvey.
Sorry, this major municipal system's in operation in California right now.
Yeah, and California is probably one of the leaders in seawater desalination.
Yeah, okay, sorry.
No, so we actually have a project that we're trying to leverage the abundance of federal funds. Hopefully, they don't disappear on us, but we're really wanting to get actual experience going through the whole permitting process and actually building and constructing and operating a seawater desalination plant.
The ones in California, California Coastal Commission approval, so that's a pretty high benchmark to meet, right?
California is its own special regulatory entity, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much for that information as well. Okay, where were we? 1017? Okay, anyone else wishes to speak to SB 1017?
That was 848.
All right. Okay, Michael Rice and Jacob Weinsack. Okay, going once, going twice, we say aloha to SB 848. Let's proceed to SB 1017, and this is regarding relating to DLNR resources authorizes the Board of Land and Natural Resources to adopt by rule any federal rule or regulation relating to the public lands of the state as it existed in January 1, 2025, that in deems are in the public interest. 1017. DLNR, no comments on this one? Denver Kuhn, are we speaking on 1017? Are you on Zoom?
Yes, yes, thanks, Chair.
For ocean tourism, all right.
Thanks, Chair, vice chair.
Good seeing you again, Denver.
Yeah, I know, it's been a little bit, but we just wanna, we are in strong opposition to SB 1017. You have my written testimony there, but one thing that I kind of didn't emphasize in my written testimony was, you know, we're already regulated by federal agencies, including, you know, the U.S. Coast Guard for a lot of our marine operations. And so this bill kind of creates, it does create an issue if you're gonna be applying federal law, you know, who is administering that? Obviously, there's one issue with just applying federal law with kind of bypassing the checks and balances that we have with Chapter 91 rulemaking, which is unclear in the bill. But there's also, you know, applying it and interpreting it, which may be different than the federal agencies that, you know, regulate us. So we are opposed to this bill. It's just, there's a lot of broad language, a lot of unknowns, and so until some of those issues are taken care of, we would stand in opposition. So thank you.
Thank you so much. Chad Walton sends communication in support. Anyone else wishes to speak to SB 1017? Okay, going once, okay, otherwise it's aloha, and we will go into decision-making. So we, surprisingly, almost finished because we thought we had to defer some items on this measure. Okay, all right. Okay, IT, we're gonna take a few minutes for decision-making. The Committee on Water and Land is going into decision-making on its Monday, February 3rd agenda at 1:06 PM. With regards to SB 1296 relating to disaster recovery, we'll pass with amendments and we'll remove Part II of this measure, and the introducer is giving us direction. All right, make it fast.
No, no, just Part II is redundant, given the overall bill, and that to amend it the way OPSD does, unfortunately, opens it up to the whole state of Hawaii, so let's just remove Part II for now. Thank you.
Okay.
Point of clarification, specifically words, Part II to the introducer?
It's the SMA minor.
Oh, okay, that portion.
Yes.
That portion, so, sorry.
Because they're also recognizing other measures that's been going through. Okay, we have other...
So on page nine, that section?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, all right. Further discussions, vice chair, for the vote, Chair goes aye.
Chair's recommendations to pass SB 1296 with amendments. Chair votes aye. Vice chair votes aye. Senator Chang?
Aye.
Senator McKelvey?
Yes.
Senator Decord?
Aye.
Madam Chair, recommendations adopted.
Okay, with regards to SB 364, Chair's recommendation is to defer this measure. SB 366 relating to stream maintenance, we also will be deferring this measure. SB 386 relating to, relating to water systems... Okay, I have deferred, but didn't we have an appropriation request from DLNR? No? 386. Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. On SB 386 relating to water systems, we will defer this measure. SB 841 relating to marine life conservation districts, we will pass this measure with amendments and will also defect the effective date on this measure. Okay, with that said, vice chair for the vote, Chair goes aye.
Chair's recommendations to pass SB 841 with amendments of the five members present, any no votes, any votes with reservations. Hearing none, Madam Chair, recommendations adopted.
Okay, on SB 848, and this is desalination, Chair's recommendation is to amend this measure. We will take the recommendation from the Board of Water Systems on Oahu, and we'll add DLNR's recommendation as well with regards to comments on appropriations into the committee report as it moves along. Okay? With that said, vice chair for the vote, Chair goes aye.
Chair's recommendations to pass SB 848 with amendments of the five members present, any no votes, any votes with reservations. Hearing none, Madam Chair, recommendations adopted.
Okay, with regards to SB 1017 relating to Department of Land and Natural Resources, Chair's recommendation is to defer. Okay, thank you very much, committee. We worked hard today. All right, folks.